Let's call the meeting to order. First item is if you turn off your cell phones or turn them to vibrate. Next item is the minutes. Is there a motion?
Move on.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next discussion, approval of the claims. Is there a motion?
I'd move it.
Second motion.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Pass around the memorandum and personnel transaction.
I'd move on.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is Tracy Handke here?
This is just to...
Well, this is just the approval. Is there a motion?
I'd move it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Glenn's? There he is.
One side of me was very kind to 911.
I'm sorry, Glenn. John?
Here today to talk about the fiber optic exchange between the county and the city in regards to a county facility down on Tribune.
Want me to help you with that? Yeah, Louis.
Put together just a little slideshow describing the project. I've been put in a position where I'm helping the city with all the fiber optic projects. So as we're doing these fiber projects throughout the city, the city has put extensive amount of fiber in the major corridors to connect to the signals. In any opportunity we have, we're trying to connect to city facilities and/or county facilities. This happens in the first county facility. We've had the opportunity to go near. The current Veterans Affairs Office currently is connected by wireless network. As you can see here is the county Veterans Affairs Office. Uses a wireless network up to the tri-state communications tower up on Bluff Street and then back down here to the courthouse. There's some advantages and disadvantages to wireless. Wireless advantages, it was lower cost insulation than fiber or copper from here to there. Some of the disadvantages, recurring monthly tower rent. Currently, tower rent's paid out of John's budget for this site. It's not a secure network. The wireless network has the potential of exposing confidential data and personal information to hackers. Has a higher risk of outages due to weather, loss of power, and more points of failure with each radio link. So there's a radio link here at the courthouse, there's one at the tower, and then one down at the office of the Veterans Affairs. Current system operates on a low rate of speed network and currently has no redundancy Proposed project, we had the opportunity to, working with Long Lines Fiber Com and the state DOT. Currently, the city has 248 strand of fiber that go up Hamilton Boulevard. And we have empty duct that goes down Tribune from Myrtle down to Perry Creek. And that was a joint partnership between the DOT, the city, Long Lines Fiber Com. This portion here is the piece that we're discussing with the county being a partner in this project. Looking at is fiber optic ducts. That's what this here is in my hand. Proposing the county pays for the installation of this duct between these two points. Current cost of that proposed project is a little over $9,000. Again, that's a partnership between basically the city and Long Lines Fiber Com. So if the county did this on their own, or the city did this on their own, it'd be much more than, it'd probably be double that figure to just do that stretch. The cost does not include any fiber optics. I'm working with, oh, I'm sorry, the only piece of fiber optics that's involved in this project is the city will provide a 12-count fiber from the building up to the main conduit to this location. The 12-count looks like this little piece of fiber in my hand. It's a little 12-count piece of fiber. And proposing, county funds this portion, the city then would give the county access to four fibers of the main route. That route being, here's the location we're talking about. The city would give you four fibers from this point north on Hamilton. Currently, we have fiber that goes all the way out, and will have all the way out to Outer Belt Drive. And then on back to the Mark McRae Building, which is where we need to get to. Future projects, we're trying to connect at Wesley Way down to 7th Street, this location. If the city plans to finish this connection between the 7th and MLK. So when we get that completed, we're going to take four of your fibers from this county building up to 14th and Wesley, back down to MLK in this direction. We also would take four fibers down this direction, the 3rd and Pearl, I'm sorry, Tribune and Pearl. At that point, we'd take two fibers this direction into the MLK, and two fibers this direction to the MLK. And that would provide redundancy. We, at that point, we would have one larger ring so the data could travel each, either direction. So if we have an outage, somebody digs up an area, it would then revert the traffic back to the MLK, this location. Fiber gets dug up anywhere along this route, that's the path it would take. Fiber would get dug up on Hamilton, at that point, it has, yeah, it would then travel to this route to the MLK. If anything happens up in this area, the traffic would then travel to the MLK from the east. The only areas that we would have, no redundancy would be between your building and the main route, or right here where it enters into the MLK or into the courthouse. All the fiber that the city has ends up at the MLK and then either goes to the courthouse, city hall, or the police department at this point. Advantages of fiber, first advantages, can be very expensive for installation costs and can be interrupted if dug up. Fiber advantages, has no recurring monthly cost if you own the fiber, and that's what this agreement is indicating. You would pay for the installation cost of this duct. The city would then provide you with fiber to the MLK and to the courthouse, which is their property. So they would provide you with four fibers in exchange for you building the duct. It's a very secure network, less opportunity for outages as long as you have battery backup or generators each, and to operate the network. Not affected by weather, operates on a higher data transfer rate, allowing live video security building and voice over radio telephone systems to operate on the same fibers. So, for example, if you see Stan LeFay for the buildings he has connected, he's able to monitor that building's temperature, any issues with maintenance, door access systems, voice over radio phone systems. They're beginning to put that in a lot of the city buildings. If building a fiber ring design, redundancy is in place, limit outages, cause they quit the failure of being dug up. Fiber will be able to handle future needs as dated, unlike wireless or copper. You see all over town, they're digging up, putting additional back, and you'll see the orange pipes sticking up. They're doing away with copper. They're moving towards fiber. Phone companies like Long Lines Fiber Com, they're building to the Verizon cell sites, there has to be a backhaul. And the backhaul has to handle the data. And that's what they're putting in the ground is fiber. Wireless was good for a day, but it's definitely not as dependable or can't handle with capacity, but fiber optics can.
There seems to be a lot of advantages by going with the fiber and, you know, you said it's going to cost us $9,000. That's a, to me, I think that's a low cost for what we're going to gain from all of this, particularly, you know, the communications and the security of the system as a whole. What are we paying now on the towers?
About $100 for rent, about, for the tower rent. The bigger kicker is the monthly telco cost out there, it's about $250 a month, most available away. So approximately $3,000 a year, so just that alone. This is a good deal. Glenn has brokered a number of these arrangements between the city and the private partners. And this is a good deal. It's a win-win for both end of the house, so.
When would this be completed, Glenn?
They're ready to do the work today. So it's part of this whole through 3rd and Pearl reconstruction. Fiber Com needs to move their traffic to another route. They're looking at this Tribune project. The other portion of it is between Perry Creek and Pearl Street that needs to be completed. I'm working now with another exchange with the DOT. For those, for the DOT to build that portion of it, and the DOT to provide the fiber for the whole Tribune route in exchange for six fibers the city has to give them some redundancy. So there's a lot of exchanges going on, and that's the whole public-private partnership thing we're trying to work with.
I think the other portion that I like about it is that it's going to be a one-time cost, and it's not going to be a continuing cost for the taxpayers of the county. And if you're looking at longevity, we're looking at something here, if no one disturbs it or cuts through any of the fiber, we would not have a problem ever. And it's going to just cost the taxpayer pennies in the future, as far as I'm concerned.
The ideal part is too, is the city, when it's all finished, the city will own the main route fiber and the duct. So if it's dug up, it's a city's problem. The only portion of it that would be the county's area would be between the building and the main route, that 100 feet or 200 feet. The chances of that getting dug up without the county being aware of it would be pretty minimal.
Is this informational this morning, or is it just up for discussion, or what?
Mr. Chair. It was discussion and action because they're out there, apparently.
Well, I would move that we allow this to happen. And we look to Mr. Butler to find the money in our budget, either some in operations or whatever, to pay for this.
My next step is I, once I have the county signature on the exchange agreement, then I will get it on the city council agenda for their approval to allow, you know, the exchange for the four fibers. So we'll go to the county, our city council, hopefully on their next regular session.
James?
Do we have a second?
Not yet.
We have to...
We have to have a second. Second.
James of Rugged Tech Research, Council of 116, Nebraska Street. I was just curious, is this coming out of your budget?
Or no?
No.
I have no budget.
Okay. It sounds like a great idea how we're paying for it.
Well, that's what my question was, and I think that if we look at, you know, several different options here, it might come out of WCIC's budget, a portion of it, because we pay into that fund for services that we currently are receiving in collaboration with the city. So some of that money could be diverted from John, from your budget, to pay for that part of that cost.
And I would do that. I would contribute to that, be a partner in that.
And it's my understanding this thing will more than pay for itself in less than three years.
Yes. Still, that being said, I would still contribute to that. It's the right thing to do, so.
I heard it was a cost of $100, Fiber Com, and $250 somewhere else. Who are paying those costs right now? There's $350 in costs, who's paying for it?
Part of it's WCIC.
The tower is ours, is IT, so that, the telecom costs, the benefits and social services is my sense, the tenants of that building.
So, what cash comes out of your budget out of $350?
$100.
$100. So there's $100, you could contribute, and then we could cover the rest of our riverboat. Just a one-time, it's a one-time?
One-time expenditure.
Or divert the $250 out of the other two budgets. I mean, they're paying it anyway.
Or you just pay it all on Riverboats, a one-time shot, $9,000 bucks. And Riverboats should be used for purpose one time and not managed.
Does that work?
Works for me.
I think it works for me, because we're eliminating, we're eliminating costs from two programs, I mean, two departments here. And as you say, the other portion, small portion, come out of Riverboat.
In three years.
In three years, it's going to pay for itself.
We've got a 10-15 set time, so we've got to sell a piece of property from, so we're going to have to stop this.
Want to take a vote on it first?
Ready.
I'm ready.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
What? Are you going to vote?
I did. Aye.
Oh, okay. We didn't hear you.
Opposed? We did not hear you. Motion carries, so get her done. I'm like, what's this? Get her done.
Good Nebraska.
We now have a public hearing in sale of property, parcel number 538815, 2617 South Maple Street. Is there anyone to be heard for or against the sale? Not the time to buy it.
Seeing none, I move the hearing to closed.
Are you speaking for or against the sale, or?
For.
You're here to buy it? Are you here to buy it?
Yes.
Okay, we're just closing the hearing and then we'll sell the property.
Vote on the motion to close.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, Bob, is there anyone here to bid on this property? In your name?
Bob Beulahs.
And your bid? Is there anyone else here to bid? Is there a motion?
I'd move that we allow the sale to Mr. Beulahs for $5.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bob, you can go right.
Plus closing.
Plus closing. There's a guy right here at the door, he'll take your money. We have an approval for resolution for a tax abatement for Living Water Evangelical
I'd move it.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Dwight? There you are.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Dwight Lane, Executive Director of Simcoe, and I'm here also with Judy Meyer, who's the housing manager. And I don't know, I had handouts. I see with tablets, are handouts still allowed? Are we taking paper?
They are.
I guess I'm too old for ration.
That's okay, I still use both.
I just wanted to bring you up to date. I've been, we've been here before to talk about the Housing Trust Fund, what I handed out, several sheets. The first one is the news release that you can read. It's dated August 16th from the Iowa Finance Authority. And we've worked several years to get to this point, and were approved by their commission. And you can see, it's called, it's not short, Western Iowa Community Improvement Regional Housing Trust Fund. And in there you'll see where they've allocated 7.8 million to 27 certified local housing trust funds, and it's to develop and preserve affordable housing locally. Again, I just brought that. The second page is the map, so you kind of have an idea of all of the trust funds. And there are parts of the state that aren't covered yet. You'll see our area there with Woodbury, Plymouth, Cherokee, Ida, and Ona is now shaded because the, this trust fund serves this area, excluding Sioux City, because you'll see number three, that Sioux City already has a housing trust fund, has one for some time. And then the third page behind that is the dollars that they put out there. The application is actually due October 1, but they show with that 7.8 or almost 7.9 million, they list the dollars that are available. Again, there's a base amount plus per capita award based on the census, 2010 census. And you'll see down at the bottom there in the middle, potential new local housing trust funds, the Simcoe would be 302,537. And that's what if we applied for and were awarded, would receive for the five counties. And then the last page will just give you an idea of the income limits for Woodbury. Those are from HUD, so they can change and probably will, October 1. Give you an idea by person. We obviously have to help some people in the 50%, some in the 30, and some of the Now, it's connected to all this, as we've talked about before, with that 302,537, there has to be a 25% match of about 75,000. So we bring that to your attention because wherever, you know, the match we can obtain and is available, then that's where we utilize the funds. Obviously, ideally, it'd be nice to have about 15,000 per county, and we could just utilize it for the whole area and for your entire county. I know that's difficult, the budgets that you have to deal with. Right now, in Woodbury, we have every city, because not only did you have to approve being the trust fund, but every city had to, and everyone in Woodbury has. So technically, if there was funding available for the county, every city would be eligible and their residents to participate in this program. And again, it's based on these HUD income guidelines. My pitch is always that the most affordable housing is existing older homes, and a lot of times, through disrepair, they need some assistance. Sometimes it's young families, sometimes it's elderly with fixed income, but this is a program to come in, help with the roof or windows, keep it from leaking, keep it from deteriorating, because, you know, once it falls down, and it can't be replaced, I mean, you can't replace an older home in that 70 to 120, 100,000 range. You can't build homes, nobody wants to build homes for that. So we find it's vitally important. But obviously, with everything, there's a local match, and, you know, we're looking to obtain that, whether that's from cities, the county. We wrote, we have written a grant that Judy has to the Federal Home Loan Bank. Fortunately, we won't know that until after October 1, when this app has to be due. So if that falls through, then we'll have to look for funding to utilize these funds. So we bring that before you, whether that's now, I mean, the funding will be available January 1, or consider it in your next year's budget. We would appreciate that. And Judy, if you have any other comments, I should hand out some booklets there with some information.
That's just information about the way that we've been operating the homeowner occupied repair program to date. We've provided assistance to just over 50 households throughout the five-county region, and that's been spread out fairly evenly among the five counties.
The matching funds, you're looking at what, 15,000 from Woodbury County?
Well, it's about, yeah. I mean, if we just divide it evenly, start, it's about 15, it's a 75 total for five counties.
And then after that?
Well, technically, this is something that as long as it's funded, last year with 6 million, it would have been about 250, and we weren't in trust fund yet. But this is an annual allocation, so as long as there's funding available, technically, you could be receiving as an area, 5, 300,000, maybe 250 would have been last year, every year, and we would have to match that, keep doing that. So it's not just a one-time deal, unfortunately. But it is, you know, kind of over a period of five, 10 years, a way to utilize funds that have been in other areas of the state, and we just saw that as a need. Whatever, whoever doesn't apply for it, it just goes to the other parts of the state, so, because they utilize and spend all the funds. So we're just trying to look at options to help in the housing in our area.
In order for you to get this, you'd have to have the five counties?
Well, we have to have 75,000 matched. So I guess if two counties want to come up with all of it, we would just focus on that area for this year. I mean, that's how I'm looking at it, unless the rules are any different, but, you know, if somebody else wanted to step up and supply the match, it would just, we'd just focus on whether it was a community, one of the communities, or, say, like, somebody just said, yeah, we'll put in five or 10, we could just match, you know, put those dollars to that community and their residents themselves, and we could do that. We haven't approached them yet, city by city, and that just takes a little more time. So I thought we'd start with you and go one time from there. But you could do that, I mean, and just focus on an area. So just ask for your consideration and to think about that, and have any thoughts on where to go with this.
Well, I think it's a wonderful idea. Could this match be in kind? It's just got to be cash?
It's got to be cash. What we're ultimately doing is turning around, having inspected, hiring a contractor, and that's what Judy does. They do the repairs, and then we make the payments to them, so.
Just off the cuff, I'm thinking that we're, right now, we're considering our economic development position, and to me, that would be one of the areas that we could look at as far as part of the cost coming out of that particular department, if we have money there for that. And I would like to, you know, consider it in that specific area, because it is an economic development thing, particularly if you're looking at development and housing in the rural areas of Woodbury County, which I'd be interested in.
And I guess it wasn't specific. Right now, what we're applying for is owner-occupied housing rehab. Beyond that, and they kind of, I'd like to see if you put your feet wet doing that, there can be rental rehab, there can be down payment assistance, there can be, I think they've even built spectrums in the development, if that was the desire of the group. So there's a lot of options there. Right now, we're looking at owner-occupied housing rehab.
To me, that would be a good project for economic development person locally in the community, and I know that, you know, the small towns need support as far as maintaining their residents and that kind of thing, and that would really be helpful for them. That's just my thought.
Any other questions for Dwight? You'll be back at budget time, I'm sure.
Yeah, we'll be back. We'll know after October 1, if the Federal Home Loan Bank funds us, we apply for a half million over two years, that would obviously help us for two years, so. But I want you to keep, be aware of that, because grants are grants, you know them, sometimes they're funded, sometimes they're not. We try all we can with all the grants available, but you need a safety net if you want to utilize these.
They don't last forever either.
Thank you.
All right, thanks Dwight.
Thanks, Dwight.
Thank you. Chair? Sheriff? Is the sheriff here?
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I wanted to bring back, talk about the jail issues and see where we can proceed. We have these jail staffing issues that haven't gone away, and we've met with Mercy Business, or they sent us a letter informing us of the need for three additional nurses to provide 24/7 coverage. And that is due to, large part, the inmate care of the drug and alcohol problem, and also a lot of the mental health issues that we're dealing with today with the mental health cuts that now these people find themselves in our jail. So Mercy had a great concern, one of the things that we kind of noted was that a number of our correctional officers are contacting the nurses after hours regarding symptoms. And I think that's a, not a very safe practice, for them to try to diagnose and make the phone call, and the nurse try to decide without that nurse being present at our facility. I think in the long run, it's probably a recipe for disaster. So those are, they, they would like to see the three additional nurses, and that we would go to a 24/7 coverage. That's a, that's one area that is a great concern, and one that I think the board should be aware of, and that we need to really look into some long-term planning, how we're going to remedy this problem. And then, the next, the next issue is where we're at today on the overtime to cover what we feel is a staffing necessary to staff and take care of the inmates in, in our facility. And, you know, this, the rate that we're going, and the understaffing, you know, basically, we're on a kind of a fiscal disaster for our overtime. And we're just eating it up, and we got guys working on extra shifts, and then you suffer from burnout, with burnout, you maybe have some of the issues that could arise, that we're not taking the extra precautions that we should, so. You know, you can pay overtime, but then you have that downside with that, along with that, once it, if they decide to use it as comp time, with their contracts, you know, they, they get so many hours of comp time, then they can start using it, and we still have to backfill, so. It just keeps cycling over and over, and our problems don't seem to go away. Like I said in the past, we, we just, we keep dealing with these issues, and we're trying to figure out ways collectively that we can overcome this. Here's, here's where we're at. We feel strongly that six people is not a safe environment for the jail, I think we, we all can agree with that. That even if the numbers were 150, 160, two people inside a controlled environment, or in a controlled room, and four feeding, handing out meds, booking inmates, assisting with laundry, is just not enough when people are coming in and out of the jail, being processed, or the police department, state patrol, the sheriff's officers bringing, bringing them in. We looked at our last 90-day average, and we, we've been averaging about 195 to 200 inmates, so we, we've stayed along in that area. You know, we've discussed the, the RTF that's opening, but the RTF would not help us, I mean, here's what comes out with the RTF, if they open today, we would lose four inmates. So it is not a facility that's going to help alleviate our overcrowding, or our, or issues that we face at the, at the jail presently. So, what, what I'm looking for is to see how we can proceed collectively, you know, if I go to 12-hour shifts, come December, there'll be a budget amendment, and I'm, that's what I'm looking for. Because we, we would have, Mr. Butler would know, we'd have quite a bit of overtime. Somehow, we need to correct that measure. I don't want to, you know, I know I do have the latitude to do some things, but when it comes to spending that kind of money, when you're not budgeted for it, that's why we need to have this discussion. And so, that's, that's one of the areas, and then the next thing, if, I think if we could look together in a long-term plan, and look at maybe adding two correctional officers a year for the next three, and a jail nurse one each year, would really help, and that, that would begin maybe with a budget amendment, if we could look at that. The 12-hour shifts would, I believe, Todd's done a lot of the figuring on that, I believe we'd go to about 14 correctional officers per shift. And, so if you had some time off coming, we would never fall below a certain number of what we're doing now, eight plus one. Plus, it gives us the additional coverage that we're looking for. I have spoke with a number of different agencies that use it, it's one that at the beginning, we met a little resistance, but as it went, they really all enjoyed it. 12 hours were, though I think maybe be long, but according to the different sheriffs, if they tried to get rid of it now, they'd have a big fight on their hands. So, I think it's because that you work four days, you're off three, and then you work three, and then you're off four, it's kind of rotates, and.
Let me, let me, let me stop you just for a minute. Have you identified cuts in order to come up with these dollars?
Cuts as far as?
So you can make payroll?
No, we, well, what we have is, what we have is we've had, if you would allow, and I've talked to Dennis before, if if you are going to allow the money that we're saving as far as for all those senior people that have left, and now you have the newer, you're going to have some substantial money savings there. You're going to have a tremendous amount of money, I think you'd agree, would you, Mr. Butler?
Yeah. We didn't, you know, see, we're put that and see how much money that really does amount, because actually, under budget now, if you're going from $28 an hour, that's probably, that's going to be quite a.
Yeah, that, that's, that's cost savings.
Exactly.
But you've got to operate within the parameters of your budget, and I think we figured out, what was it, 1.5%, Denny?
For what?
To come up with.
If you took, if you took a total budget, just for general basic, you can't do general stuff, you can't do probate, there are separate ones. But if you take a total budget, it's around, I have there 8.3 or 4 million in the general basic. To come up with 100,000, you have to cut at 1.2% across the border, or come up with a total cuts. Now, potentially, it could come through this gap here, that we're talking about here, potentially, but we had to look at it. I guess that's why you're discussing how.
Right. That's, that's the whole idea, this isn't an action, this is a discussion, and trying to figure out a collaborative effort here, how we can get this to work, because our problem's not going to go away. And our problem is our problem together, when I say our, it's not just the sheriff. It's all of us together, how, how are we going to make this work? Because, you know, you, you have to have the resources to do the job, and you have to have the money to be able to fund the resources. I think if we look at past litigations and things that have come up, I truly believe, and our staff has truly believed, that our issues come from understaffing. And now, with Mercy bringing this to our attention about the nursing care, and the, the mental health issues, and the alcohol and drug issues that continue, we are the only jail that is our size that is not staffed with nursing staff 24/7. So, you know, we need to constantly, law enforcement as a whole, public safety is constantly evolving, and we can't stay at what we stayed at for the last several years. We need to look forward into seeing how we can provide better services, better safety, and make sure everything works for our, our staff, and, yeah. It's a, it is a tough situation for all of us to come up with dollars and things like that, but in the long run, we pay out a great amount of dollars in lawsuits. So how can we best serve the public by not getting into those problems is kind of what I'm coming up with in this proposal, is that we need to make sure that we have these things in place. The nursing 24/7, the additional staffing to make sure that our facility and the people that are inside the facility are safe. I think that's well documented, we've been discussing it for several months. And, you know, I think here in the next few months, we probably should move forward to some action. The savings could be, as I stated earlier, that another area, I believe Major Wick would, has researched it, is that the amount of acting sergeant pay that we pay would pretty much be eliminated. Dennis, I think that's roughly 40, 40 or 50,000 maybe. But the number isn't that huge, but there is numbers there of savings, because what you would have then is you'd always have a sergeant on staff, not someone where the sergeant's off a few occasions that you might, but you would save some money there, along with, remember when those deputies that were long-term serving deputies, and now we hired new ones. Also, we hired four from the jail, who were probably up in the senior level in the jail, down to a beginning correctional officer. So the savings there, I think would come close to offsetting some of the issues.
Well, you're the sheriff, and as long as you operate in your budget.
Well, I can operate in my budget under the, under the way we're going, that's why I'm here, because quite frankly, I'm not able to do that. That's why I'm here asking that we look at the mere fact that the safety needs, numbers need to be up. And that what I'm doing is paying overtime until we correct the problem. It's a stopgap solution till we get to the point where we are staffed fully. Now, you know, the great debate could be, should you just keep spending money and overtime? Until I get the personnel that need it, I, I'm going to have to, because I believe it's a tremendous liability if I don't. Because I have stated on a number of occasions in open meetings here, that we have to have a jail facility staffed adequately, so that we provide not only safety for the correctional officers, and safety for the people that are in the prison. If we don't, I think that we put ourselves in great danger.
Larry, I, I've heard some options here. One thing that you just made sheriff is that, two, two jailers for this year.
Right.
That's down from five from your presentation, from four.
Right.
And secondly, you've talked about, and I, I've read your information here that you've gotten back from Mercy, there were two options here, one for five nurses, and then one for, for three. That three would cost us about, if we went full blast on that, about $224,000, there's just no way we can afford that. You're talking about one nurse now. The other point that you brought out was that there were some savings from positions that was being held in advance and that we're not filling.
Right.
That's all within your budget, that's been budgeted for, so to me, those are options. The, the other options prior to that was that, I was looking at these figures, if we fully funded the two, you know, the three positions, three and a half positions, I think it is here, it was like 224,000. If we fully funded the, the five jailer positions that you wanted earlier, that was another 288,000, which would amount to about $500,000.
Right.
There'd be no way that we could take that out of, you know, reserves and do that, but if we can sit down at the table with, with Dennis, and, and look at where those monies are now within your budget that's being, being, being taxed for.
Right.
And do it within your budget, then I think that's a, that's a workable solution for me.
Right.
That's a workable solution. And the other prospect too, is once we get there, our budgeting process normally starts, I believe, and we basically start that in December, when we start asking folks to start putting your budgets together, and, and perspectives, and that kind of thing. And if those numbers are still high, and they seem to be going down from the last report that I've gotten from you, we've got 178 people in the, in our facility with about 14 people that's at the period yields out here, and 16 at, at federal prisoners that we're currently holding. I think, for me, anyway, I think that if we can sit down and look at these, this proposal that you've just made orally, that might be workable, if we can do that within the $8 million budget that you currently have. That's just me.
Yes, I have a question. You alluded to the fact that, and I'm sure it is true, mental health problems in the jail have, you know, are always an issue, and handing out medication. If you put a full-time nurse on, do you think you still need two jailers, or would that alleviate enough duties from one of the jailers that you could get by with the addition of, of one?
Well, it's just.
I mean, it's probably two separate things, but if, not knowing how much time is spent on, you know, assessing, you know, the, the health of, of the inmates, I don't know if you had that staff person, if that would alleviate or free up enough time?
No.
That's you separate.
Okay.
That, you know, and I do, I invite you up there, because you will see that they're moving all the time. And there is no really downtime, I mean, there's short staff, and we're, you have to do jail checks, and if we have female in a male area, they have to come through, I mean, that's just what we have to, ideally, that's not perfect. But because of where we're at in our staffing, we just have to do, so we're making sure we're getting the checks, and I think by going to the 12-hour days, it, it helps us in the staffing issue. Yeah, the days are longer for them, but it also covers that more, more people can do other things. Maybe we could have people designated at the booking area, instead of having to get away from booking, and go do some other assignments, so.
Dave, do you, 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 you used to have six people per shift, right?
Right.
Are you currently working with eight people per shift?
Right.
And you started that in June?
Yes.
And they, are they on 12-hour now?
No, we haven't gone to it, because I'm not comfortable doing it until.
See, that's going to cost us money too, because that's a hundred, that's a $100,000 increase in, in your budget that you'd have to find, and that's just.
That's where I think the difference is on the higher-end deputies versus the lower starting deputies, and the higher-end correctional officers, and the, that's where some of that money would be, if we went to those. But that's, you know, that's, that's kind of where we're at, I really would love to sit down, we got it with Mr. Butler, and we, we really need to iron out, so by November, we, we probably want to start working in October, because we are looking at all kinds of different ways, our problems aren't going to go away. I know that it's easy to get fixated on a set of numbers, 178 or 175, we just have said it's, it's not safe. Because with six, that we were using, two were locked up basically, and couldn't help. With the extra, two more, it does help, but it's not, it's not the numbers that I would like, and the only way that we, we did our research was, the only way that we could come up with it, the best solution was 12-hour days.
Dave, on the nurses, I'm concerned about how are you going to use those nurses, I know that nurses take vitals on, on people, you know, your blood pressure, your pulse and that kind of stuff, and, and are you going to use those people to make diagnoses, I don't, is, is that? Because are, are 90% of the people that you do, or that the law enforcement brings in, has, has some influence of narcotics or drugs in it? And maybe with, and I'm just thinking out loud, that maybe your folks, the jailers, needs to be having some more in-depth training about how to identify a person that's in a critical condition, or in lesser condition, that should not be spending their time in, in jail at that point, take them, to take them in for some treatment at one of the hospitals, and then get them back to.
We already do that.
Are they, are they, are they getting more sophisticated training now from the existing nurses, or will this person add to that training?
The problem you run into is, okay, if you tell your correctional officer up doing a psychiatric evaluation.
No, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about visuals, when, when, when a person, when a person.
We have, we have a detox protocol now that's tied in by correctional officers.
Okay.
It takes time. We were running it before, we only had four people on the floor at once, that was just another one of those duties that was laid on a correctional officer.
Would a nurse be involved in that process with this additional person?
We would get those evaluations completed, and then that person is removed from jail.
Because we've got, we've got people now in our community, and all over the country for that matter, that is using all kinds of, as you know, I'm not telling anything you don't know, chemicals in their system that, that is very confusing for anybody, for that matter, to make a diagnosis, and, and so. And so if this person is gonna be used in that manner, that's gonna help us as a whole quite a bit.
We already, George, have people that come in with a blood alcohol content of .25.
Right.
We have told the police department, state patrol, whoever, take them to the hospital until that blood alcohol number's not, that might not be their favorite thing to do, but we are not gonna put ourselves in jeopardy.
But how do you analyze a person that's been using crack cocaine and there's all kinds of artificial measured in the, I mean, in that person's system? And make a diagnosis, I mean, that to me is a difficult, difficult task. And, and those are the ones that, yeah, I can look at somebody and smell.
Right.
Most of the time, if they've been drinking alcohol, but these other chemicals that people use today to destroy themselves, that would be even more difficult. When you put somebody in a cell like that and they, you know, lay down and do whatever, and how do you, how do you, how do you manage that? I mean, it's, it's, it's a, it's a real liability, not only for you, but for the entire county, as you said, because we're gonna have to look at that.
You manage it with full-time nurses, just like the other six.
Right, right.
Yeah. I think that's it, George, the detoxification, those that are going through detox, that nurse there is able to help and evaluate constantly. Because our correctional officers, you know, they get something else, there's a fight brewing over here, and so they don't get to that point. That's why the nurse, I think, is vital. I think in the, I'm with you 100% that you can't add five, I get that.
No.
You know, nobody has that kind of money. But I think if we, you know, take little steps.
Exponentally.
Two and one, look down the road, and that's, that's gonna be substantial for us. And that's probably why we should sit down together and try to figure out how best we can get this resolved.
You know, it still sounds like to me though, that adding a nurse would alleviate a lot of time constraints on those deputies. I mean, if they are responsible for all that, it just seems to me that a lot of the workload would transfer over to that trained professional. And I still question the need of two. I mean.
When you, when you put four people on the floor trying to control 160 inmates, I'd invite you to come up there and do that, Jack.
No, I don't wanna do that.
It's a tough assignment.
Yeah.
Well, now wait, wait. Now, I, I agree, it's a tough situation, a lot of jobs are tough. But how has it operated for the last 10 years this way? Has it been unsafe? What is, what is the?
D minus.
I'm sorry?
A D minus if I was doing a report card, not well. It's cost us money. And we're, we're just, we're existing by paying litigation.
Well, the litigation, there's different things involved in the litigation.
No lawyer's just suing to sue. He feels like he's got a reason, some of them get unfunded, they get settled, they don't happen, but, you know, history is, we have paid money.
Right, but not, not because we were understaffed.
Well, I don't know how you could not say that.
Well, I, I think if we can.
I can't go any further because it's confidential. And you've read the reports, same as I have.
My conclusion is that, so.
Yeah, and see, my conclusion is different, but when you go from six to eight, I'm not saying you don't need them. I don't know, but you've gotta make that case to the board in order.
I'm, I'm here making it.
But you, Dave, I'm reading off your letter.
Right.
All right, it says, "We have used a staffing formula that indicates we need an additional 21 correctional officers to staff for our average inmate population." What staffing formula did you use?
That, that formula was what has been used across the country for jails. And they came up with a number, we just take those formulas, we're not asking for 21. We recognize that the county doesn't have a chance at 21, but what we're saying is, that's where we should be, but we're, we're trying to take little steps to get there. We're way behind. I don't know what happened the last several years. I wasn't here.
We don't either, and so that's why this is such a shock, you guys coming to us and saying, you know, we need all this additional staff, when as far as I knew, everything was running fine over there. And we thought this was a temporary, you know, blip on the scale, because it went from 160 up to 200.
Right. And I'm just saying, 160, still, four and two isn't the numbers.
That's the argument, that's the case you gotta make.
And I am making it now. You know, if you don't agree with it, you're at one vote, one vote, one vote. If it's three, two, it's three, two.
It's not that I don't agree with it.
Right.
You haven't made the case enough for me. That's what I'm saying.
I do have one more question.
Yes.
I don't mean to interrupt, the cameras that we're installing, I mean, should that help alleviate some safety concerns? By adding, I mean, adding those that, I mean, it should make a difference without jumping to extra person.
What the cameras will do is help document what we're doing in the jail. It's not going to cut down on the number of physical jail checks and the help that these inmates need. The other thing you need to remember when you put that number of cameras in there, if you wanna monitor it all the time, it's going to require a person to set, to set there and monitor them, which is gonna take somebody from the floor and put them in a control room like we've got to do now.
You're, you're doing that now though, aren't you, with the existing cameras?
No.
You aren't, I mean, they aren't being monitored and looked at by?
Oh, we have to do it our way.
We are in the control room, it's trying to run the control room, handle the cameras. The only time the cameras are ever used is to make sure that they're allowing correct people through the correct doors at the correct.
Hmm. Okay, so you've got four people on the floor, and they bring somebody in. How many, two of them have to go to booking?
That's if the person's cooperative.
Okay, so on Saturday night, you got them all tied up?
Yeah, right.
All right, the other thing, did I, did I hear? If you went to the 12-hour, you would have eight people per shift.
Minimum.
Which would allow you to do vacations.
Right.
All that stuff without doing overtime to cover.
It would help, it's not gonna leave, it would help, plus it would put six sets of boots on the floor rather than four. It's gonna give us two additional people.
But that move is gonna cost us just a hundred thousand dollars for that 12-hour shift.
Yeah, it's, you know, I mean, it's, I get it, it's all dollars and cents, it's the same in my house. But then, the difference between our houses is we gotta look at what's gonna cost us more money in the long run.
Yeah, and, and we're doing that.
Right.
And, but I'm, I'm saying that the option that we have here that I hadn't heard earlier was that if we can find this within your budget and, and monies that we have not spent based on, on positions that we have not fa, filled, and, and positions that, that have been diminished to a lower position, that, then there, there is a potential here for us to do it within your budget, without going to our reserves.
I just don't know why we haven't identified how much money that is already.
Well, I, I, I think Dennis can, can, can sit down and pull those figures out.
Give us two, three, four weeks to sit down, and then let's start.
Right.
What's the first hour? When we start with the budget, it's a million dollars. Now, do we have a cost of a changeover? Over my row, do we have a $900,000 cost of a $100,000 sitting there? We, we really need to kinda look at that, verify it's there or not there. We're kinda guessing at the moment.
Right.
Same thing with the sergeant's pay too.
Yeah, I think that we should look at that process before we go any further. We, we're not gonna get anything decided here this, you know, this, this morning.
No, we don't.
But, you know, I wanna, yeah, I, I like to see numbers, and Larry does too, we all do for that matter. Because we don't have the possibility of taxing, we're at a taxing limit right now, and I really don't, and I don't think there's any of us that wants to dip into our reserves. We need those for future things for this, for this fiscal year anyway.
And when George mentions taxing, we're at our 350.
We do, yeah.
Listen, I'm, I'm understanding of all that. I'm here telling you about an issue we have and how, how we're gonna work this out. Like I said, it's not just the sheriff, it is us collectively trying to figure out a way to make sure that we are staffed. So that we are not ending up, regardless of your liking or not, end up in court. We have to make sure that we are in compliance with. Listen, today, there's all kinds of things that are required in the jail. This nursing staff, that hasn't really been increased in, I would say, your, your, decades.
No, and, and that's what I say, Dave.
I'm sorry.
You are making some radical changes over there, and they may be called for.
Right.
But this board has gotta provide the money for it.
I agree.
And the only way we get money is taxes. And we're taxed to the max.
I mean, I, I don't, I don't know your budgeting process, and I don't know what the reserves are and things such as that, you use it for other things, but to me, there's nothing more imperative right now to make sure that if you had reserves, that you'd use it this area.
But we don't have reserves to do that kind of thing. We have raises coming up in January, we've got enough reserves to cover that.
Right.
There's a number of things go into it, but anyway, we're, we're happy to work with you, Dave.
But I don't have an issue, I'm, I'm here to see how we can get to a solution. And it will take a few weeks, I'm, I'm willing to wait a few weeks, but this problem's not gonna go away. It's just not. Like I said, these issues of nurses are a great concern. We have a number of people that have tons of issues. Have they for years? Probably have. Why things weren't done, I don't know. I, I wasn't there.
Yeah, and see, we were made aware of that on September 3rd, seven days ago.
Right, on the, yeah. I think though, we got the letter, Mercy Business sent us a letter.
Late August.
Late August, so you got it as soon as we got it.
With regard to the nurses.
That is right. Dennis?
Can we come to a solution possibly? Give us four weeks to look at this, come back October 8th. We'll have the information the week before to everybody to discuss a little bit, and look at it, if there's questions, we have questions, and come back October 8th. And I'll say, if they got the money, have some discussion action. Give us time, I need you to work with Hugh more, you start to get the numbers, things like that, and with Sheriff's Office. I give us four weeks to come up with something.
Right, and as far as the staffing, if you make the case to us that you need eight instead of six, whether there's 200 people there or 160, the argument was that because of the increase, they, you know, you needed more people. But now we get a letter saying that you still need them if it goes down. And I don't, I'm not really clear with that. Maybe the rest of the board is, I don't know.
Well.
No, I don't know how that works.
You, you originally had five extra people, whatever reason they were defunded.
All right, that came from the Sheriff's Department, go ahead.
Okay. Whatever reason past sheriffs decided to get rid of five extra guys, I, I have no idea.
When was that?
Oh, that was, that was years back, I mean, we.
I don't remember that, that was.
Well, it wasn't a recommendation that came from this board, believe me, I mean, we.
That's back in 2006, 2007, something like that.
That was not a recommendation.
But that came from the Sheriff's Department, not us.
It, it actually started in 1989.
99, I thought that's when they got the big bump over there.
No, we started losing officers, and I didn't have any, but over the years, it's totally.
I know in 2004, when I was chief deputy, I sent a letter to you. And you were, you were asking to deauthorize three people, it wasn't the sheriff, because I was chief deputy. I asked if you would cut it down to at least let us have one out of the three. So two, you cut two, but for whatever budgeting reasons, under Sheriff Amy, we were cutting to three. You, you cut two, we were able to keep one. After Sheriff Parrott took office, I don't know what happened, but I believe there was a couple more. That could be budget reasons, I can't imagine any sheriff coming over saying, "I don't need more help." I know we didn't when I was under Dave Amy. The budget wasn't there, the dollars weren't there, and the cut was gonna come from the jail, so we lost two extra correctional officers, it wasn't the sheriff, came over and said, "We don't need them." Now, I don't know what Sheriff Parrott did, but what I'm saying is, we do need them. And I think I have made a case why we need them. If you recognize it or not, Larry, that you're, you're one voice, and you can be sympathetic to the cause or you can continue to not, I mean, that's up to you, but our, our case is that we are short-staffed, and I'm not gonna go against that. And how we come up with the dollars is ultimately upon all of us to make sure that the funding is there. I wouldn't, I wouldn't come over here if I didn't think I was, listen, you think I need five more headaches if I have problems with workers? And listen, it'd be, it'd be a lot easier, but that isn't the issue, I, I need more staff. And, and I think how I've proposed it is, instead of five at once, let's, let's take little steps. Two, one, two, one, two, one. And that covers us over three years, that's part of long-term planning, that's what we need to do. The county, if you look, I looked in your capital improvement five-year plan and, and the other one, and quite frankly, the sheriff wasn't in there. That's concerning. How do you, five years out, think that we're all gonna stay the same? With all the issues, sheriff's office, everything's evolving, all the requirements that were, are put on us year after year, unfunded mandates.
Well, that's the capital improvement budget.
That's the building.
Well, there was one other, wasn't there? Was there two parts of that?
Capital improvements, but we, we never had the staffing for five-year plan.
No, no, we never had. But, you know, I understand Larry's position, I mean, and I have the same concern too. When, when do we reach a, a level of, of staffing that's gonna be adequate for if we have 125 people in there or 225? Do we just keep, you know, going up and up and up? So I guess that's where I'm coming from to a certain extent, too. Do we reach a level of adequate staffing that we can handle it without, without adding additional people each and every year for the next five, 10 years?
Right, I think if we got through the first three of this two, one, two, one, two, one, you know, that's, we're gonna have to hope unless some numbers come crazy. You know, I can't predict it.
No. You know, if the city, if, if, if the county grows in numbers as I anticipate it to happen, we may have to add additional staff. But if it stays at the level that it's at now as far as population-wise, we reach a level that we don't have to grow staff any, any larger than what it is. So, I don't know, but I, I think it's a start suggestion that Mr. Butler has made as far as, let's come back in four weeks after sitting down with you, pulling all the numbers together and where those dollars are, then we can talk about this more, I think, and how to get it done.
And Dave, I don't know where this became an adversarial thing. I don't have any animosity against the sheriff, and I've been painted that way.
Right, well, that's, yeah, I don't get too concerned about that.
Yeah, and I don't either. The only thing I'm trying to do is, for one, is make you accountable the same as I'm accountable.
I agree.
And when you say you're short-staffed, I've got the auditor sitting there, he'd love to have more staff.
I, I agree, but I don't think the auditor's costing you as much money as the sheriff's office is costing you.
Maybe, don't say that, and all of a sudden make it look good.
But with that said, I don't mean to interrupt, I'm sure you're looking at who is being booked into the jail and, and you're working with the judges and other programs to implement programs to reduce those numbers.
We're doing everything we can.
Alongside of also adding staff. Is there any kind of information within four weeks that could come? I'm, I know we looked at 24/7, I don't know if that would alleviate any of, of the jail numbers, but, you know, that seems to me to also be the, the missing piece, is the overall comprehensive look at, you know, who's in jail and, and what other options there might be. Because after all, you know, we want productive members of society and, and, you know, we don't want the same people in over and over again.
I'm a proponent, like I believe all of us, that the 24/7 program would be outstanding. Would it still alleviate some of the numbers?
That's what I would.
I, I think what we're identifying is with the courts, is that those people that are up there are those that belong in there.
Okay.
That's, that's why we don't have more electronic monitoring or more at Prairie Hill. Because the seriousness, maybe not of the crime, but their, their past criminal history, their pack, if they've had assaults on police officers or any assault, domestic, and this, that, the courts and we're all in agreement that they don't belong. and this, that, the courts, and we're all in agreement that they don't belong out in society, so.
So, those numbers on all, I mean, you have stats on, on-
Right, they, uh-
Who, who is occupying our, our jail cells?
Yes, um, the, the courts and jail administrator, I believe on Fridays meet, and they discuss, um, if, if somebody could be moved or not. So, it's ongoing. I mean, these, uh, these things haven't stopped, because it's just, it's a continuing problem.
It is, and, and continual solutions-
Yeah.
-need to be worked out and-
And I, you know, I, listen, the good news is I don't think we're at the point where we'll ever have to talk for a while about building a bigger facility. So, and that was years ago, that was bannered around. I think there, we can get to that, uh, point where, uh, there's other alternatives before we ever got to that, so. But overall, the concern is just, is keeping up with the times, the, the evolving of, of making sure we have the staff, and now with the, the nurses and the conditions, uh, you know, we, we meet with, uh, the state jail inspector, and now we're going through a prison rape information act, educational act, and we have to make sure that we're in compliance with all these things, and if those that are under transgender have to have their own special section, we don't have, but we're gonna have to come up with all these things.
We are ADA compliant.
I mean, there's a number of things I could, listen, Larry, uh, I mean, you're losing some already. I'm getting grayer, but you'd lose more if I came up with all the things that we're getting bombarded with every day. ADA compliant, transgender, uh, areas, uh, I'm like, I would've wished I would've been sheriff in the 60s, it'd been a lot easier.
Well, you know, we're not, we're not, uh, we're not in the same crisis that we were back in 99, whatever, you gentlemen.
Right, exactly.
We're both here, uh, we had a waiting list of over 220-some people out on the street for reservations to get into our jail.
Right.
And we didn't have room for them.
Right.
And we, we remodeled the, uh, facility up there to, to get the additional space. We moved, uh, some of those prisoners to Prairie Hills, some of the less, uh, dangerous ones out there, and we did add staff at that time, so, uh, we're at a, we're at a, we're at a turning point here, but I'm glad we're not back, back in those 90s where we had a waiting list of people, uh, on the streets that should have been in a cell somewhere.
Right, and George, I think, you know, in, like I said, maybe in the past, you guys weren't kept up to, but the difference is I'm gonna keep you up. You might not like the music I'm singing, but it is, it's, it's, uh, it's the tune I have to play, because here's the story. Uh, when they opened Prairie Hill, just to open it, they never added staff. Sheriff Amy took staff from the jail and put it out there, so that created some trouble. We never did add staff, and see-
That was a deal he-
Right, that's a deal he, he made to work, because he was trying to be innovative and figure out ways to alleviate that to get there. So, you ha- I mean, we're Robin Peter to pay Paul, but we're never getting to the point where we can pay it back.
Yeah, and when you look back, you know, solutions are always, hindsight's 20/20.
Oh, right.
So, and with CF coming on, with all the, uh, the workers we're gonna have in here, we might be breaking, busting at the seams over there. Uh, we just have to deal with as it comes along.
Yep.
We can't plan for the worst, because-
Well, in law enforcement, we always plan for the worst and hope for the best. That's just the, that's a, that's what we have to do in our job.
Okay.
We do plan for the worst.
Good, somebody's-
Well, it is part of the overall safety. I mean, we are looking at the cameras, the doors, the locks. I mean, we are investing a lot of money into making that jail safe, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else wish to be heard? Any of the supervisors have anything? Anybody in the audience? We're adjourned.
We have canvas, we got a canvas, uh, right.
We have the canvas, 9 o'clock Friday.
Right.